I would like to call the September 28 meeting to order at seven oh five. The P is right place for the project of nations.
Hi, congratulations to everybody. We came in the states and the republic, the best, by the nation under God. Maybe there's a law for the day and justice.
Um, I don't think we have any challenges, correct?
No.
Yeah. It wasn't that we are changing anything. So we want to be approval minutes. I'll introduce you to approve the September 14th minutes.
Move to approve the separate September 14th minutes. Second.
Okay, any discussion on these? No. Hey, all those in favor can say aye.
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 I was just gonna say seven thirty, I was thinking about it, okay? Um, then those are approved as is. Okay, at this time we have public participation, two minute time limit. If anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be provided two minutes. If you could please list your name and your address for the record.
One.
Okay, seeing that there's none, we'll close that out. Let's go to correspondence.
All right. Short correspondence report today. We had an email expressing concern over the school lunch schedule. Author notes said first row students are eating lunch within a half, an hour and a half be beginning the school day. An email asking when graduation would be. And an email offering resources that may help with the district's social and emotional initiatives. That's everything.
Okay.
Yep.
At this time, we'll open up for um points of information. The only thing I wanted to say is, I'm sure you guys probably saw the email, that the joint COVID meeting is canceled that we have. However, we board members, we can attend the normal council, but we have anything to say. We're not continuing with the COVID fun, so I can't imagine that. There's really much to say.
A new meeting. Yeah, my question. We got like another meeting invite for October 28.
Saturday eight or something, so I guess. See, well, I'm just saying, I think that was another regular.
So what, what, what was taken out was the joint meeting?
Yep.
And what was put, put back in was this is an agenda item for the council to take up.
Yeah, because the council.
It was not a joint meeting the way we've had like a November joint meeting.
Like, we don't have to have everybody together.
Are we expected to speak?
I think, or I interpreted it, see, is that, you know, I would be there, maybe, you know, chair or some leadership would be there, but that if it was, if any, if we were expected to speak, it would be fairly limited. You know, to, to a, you know, the max size and us. I did notice some terminology like a report and I didn't, I didn't expect a report. But I could do a report on E S Y and just a quick report. E S Y, here's what we did, here's the study, all the things, and so on. But it was changed from a joint meeting to a typical town council meeting.
Yeah, just an agenda item, because I just didn't think we all needed to come together for a joint meeting. And I reached out to Jones to ask him about that, because I didn't find that that was necessary at this point. So um, agenda item, if anybody would like to attend, what can, but I don't foresee, because we're not asking it to extend or anything. So um, to me, it just kind of closes out.
Dr. Will, do you know if their agenda item then is the approval of the fund that we asked for, or did they already?
No, they, the way that I read that was that, that the agreement was already set up, but you as board just had to act, which is what you did.
Okay.
In that last. You know, that's how I thought that was coming down, because then Lisa taught, you know, Lisa said that is what she needed to process it. I think this was originally a discussion about whether we should continue with C R F. That was what the original joint meetings about. Now I think they just want to touch base. I did notice something about a report in there, but didn't expect so, and that can give a limited.
Well, we can touch base too, just to see and make sure what they are requiring out of that. Going from there. Anyone else? Tony?
Yeah, so Dr. Will, just in, in line with one of the correspondents. The lunches at Birch Grove, and I recognize that they were adjusted around a little bit. We've got some grades that are having lunch within an hour of getting there, hour and a half, I think the writer said. And then I know the first graders are having lunch at about one thirty in the afternoon. And we were told that they were looking into that, talking about the effects. Is there, is there a plan to adjust anything? Or we did?
We adjusted.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay. I hadn't heard yet. Could you tell me how you adjusted?
Yeah, we went the lunch to eleven. And we, you know, I met with scheduler, you know, we talked to about intervention stuff, but it did all the schedules. And we just, you know, we, we moved it so that the kids had started at eleven. I called the parent that had any contact about that.
What about the ones that are eating late then? Are they still at one thirty or?
Yeah, the ones that other times didn't change, but they had much. Yeah, the other times didn't change. That went to there.
Were all the grades, I'm sorry. Are all the grades here at T I S now? Where they, they have, the T I S has all the fourth graders and third graders on.
They're still in two ways, which is the other.
At Birch Grove.
Yeah, because the size, some of them are some big classes.
And now is it, this is just class size situation, or is this COVID?
There, well, there were a number of factors to go into why they split it. I can go back and fill out my project or my, you know, meeting notes on it. It'll take me a minute to do that.
Yeah, I'm intrigued, because like, like I said, the first graders are eating at one thirty, going to lunch and they're going to resets and then essentially coming home. So I know for my daughter, we're, we're packing her four or five snacks, you know, to make it from the time she gets to school until one thirty.
You know, listen, the teachers are always very flexible with having snacks.
They are great.
You know.
Absolutely.
The scheduling has been crazy for a long time, so if you had the early lunch, you'd have the snack in the afternoon. Like, the teachers are very good. I mean, you only get the one snack, I think, in T I S, but at Birch Grove, you have multiple snack types. So they are very flexible when it comes to that.
And my energy was focused on, on the second grade. So I did, I, it didn't, I think that's where the focus of the question was with that grade. So the other grades, you know, just kind of spitballing, K is huge, and they don't know how to do it. So they have to break up certain groups, because if they're a very big group and they're not such like, you know, second graders can make the argument, can go in and just do that. They go in, they know the rigmarole, they get through, they go, the Ks are learning how to, to do this. And they're a much bigger group. And so, you know, breaking them into two groups was seen as important, because of that, for that reason, for instance, for K. Reset safety too, monitoring wise, all that. They're just, part of it is they just weren't, you know, that group is, is done that way. It's, it's, it's safe, it helps maintain their safety, it helps get them through in a reasonable amount of time. If anyone's ever been around a bunch of kindergartners, nothing, very, a number of things are not opened on their own. You know, you have to open things for them, there's, you know, it just is a more timely, more time consuming situation. So that's why groups like the younger ones are first, they're broken up.
So we classically had lunches that lead in the day though? For any of?
I would have to go back on historical now. My focus was on that, that grade two group.
I understand, and there's a lot of time. I'm, I'm interested, I'd like to hear more on all of, on how that spread and winds up. And if there are concerns in having any of the K through two eating lunch that late in the day.
Any more? Um, Dr. Will, just to follow up, I think we had talked about it maybe two episodes ago. Um, are we all set with our S R Os? They get their final approval and they've started?
Well, we, we are, the holdup now, which will not, we, this won't be a holdup for one of them, but it'll be a holdup for the other. And there's some post, post training and cameras. So we do have one starting very soon, in the next week or so. Due to, and then the other will, will have to finish post-training. They, they have to get camera trained and they have to have their camera before they start. So we, we will be probably have both of them by the end of October, somewhere that's on, we'll have to observe to the first.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's go ahead and move on to our student representative.
Hi, thank you. So one thing before I start, after I say this and answer any questions or comments, I will be leaving, because the girl has way too much homework. Okay, so getting into a Mira, we're just gonna do our thing. He's there, say hi. Um, so first things first, homecoming, homecoming is coming up, it's next month. Everyone's very excited for it, and the student council is deciding between two themes right now. Uh, enchanted forest, boo, and Hollywood, yay! Um, so that will be coming to a decision next week officially. And then spirit week, we're still kind of deciding, but by the next meeting, we'll have all that and like, no.
Sorry, I'm online, I'm very sick. Another thing that's happening um next week is we're having two field trips. Um, Dec is hosting a field trip to this leadership camp, where all students are welcome, we're a part of the club. It's on October fourth. And then also the engineering pathway is holding a field trip on October seventh, where we can go and tour and visit the manufacturing field at UConn.
All right, um, so there are some seminars coming up for seniors that will help with the nest. Sure you all know what the nest is, because I'm sure it's been discussed a lot. But um, it's going to increase the amount of artifacts that students have, help them set up if they haven't already. And it'll just be a lot of help for students that don't really know what to put in their nest, or don't really even know what the nest is, if they're new. So I think it's a really great idea, and it'll help a lot of people be able to graduate better.
And then, last week we talked a little bit about the dance that the seniors were being held. Turned out, I think, like barely any people bought tickets, so it was canceled. It's not very good, like, no one bought tickets, so it was canceled, and no one showed up, it was not good.
Yeah, eloquent, thank you. And then the open house happened last week. I was there, it was great. Um, so everyone was there to help. To my knowledge, no one got insanely confused, and by no one, I mean no parents got insanely confused. I got some pretty sweet hours from it. Um, and it went very well, from what I heard from teachers, and I think that it was good.
Okay, and then our final um comment we have for today is, last week elections were held. I know sophomores went well, freshmen went well, juniors, there was some miscommunication. And then the senior election went very bad, if you need to like have work, I bet you know, but if you need more information, we can fill you in.
And that's it.
Slide over that. Perfect. Thank you so much, ladies, and I hope you feel better. So weird seeing someone in your spot, is that your spot?
That's what I feel like.
So thank you. Any questions for our students?
Very important. Very entertaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think you have a great job at open.
Thank you.
Kids were very helpful.
She was at the club last week.
Nice, I love to hear that.
I also have to log off. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Will.
Hearing nicely.
Yeah.
Love it.
Okay, that was fun.
Now, let's go into the legislative update presentation. That's still live.
They have like time.
Really, you have that kind of energy.
So uh, what I, what I tried to do is take, you know, from a, from a multi, you know, a set of resources in a very long presentation and put it on a document with the board, the, it's on the board dashboard, I can publish it other places too. This gives you a summary of the legislative changes for the year. And this is a resource gathered from, you know, Shipman and one or two other places, mostly Shipman. And so you'll see there's a, there's a lot here. In fact, as I was putting it in this format, which required listening to presentations and then also viewing some PowerPoints and pulling things into one, one format for us. It was hitting me how many things there are that we have to, that we have to adjust to in the coming year, and then in the coming year, and maybe two or three years. So it was very sobering and very, it was kind of hard to process. I put a bunch of things in different places for admin, we're gonna meet about it. But we already talked about it, I, I shared with them, and we're meeting again next week. Because it's gonna require a lot of adjustments from us at work. So I'll try to summarize what's difficult to summarize, but if you take a look at it, we can swing back around on this in some of the other meetings, subcommittee wise, and even board meeting. But, you know, we may want to look at this in F F C, we may want to look at it in policy, we may want to look at it in curriculum. We may want to look at the, this particular document separately in all three of those domains. Because there are things that apply to every single one, and that they're not small things, they're fairly big things that we have to adjust for. So starting with the stuff that you kind of already know. Um, remote, derivative education meetings, that stays. You know, they, other than executive sessions, have to be open to the public. Um, remote learning, we've talked about this with respect to dual instruction in the curriculum committee. Basically, we are still not able to use it for what's called dual instruction. We're hoping that that changes, and I'm trying to summarize. We're hoping that that changes, because if you do have a child that's hospitalized or something, then being able to bump into a classroom might be extremely useful for them. And that's what was ruled out by doing it the way the state did it. So there's a lot of people, including caps, petitioning to get that changed. And we hope that that will change. But effective July first, we had to prohibit any kind of dual instruction, which, the definition of which is simultaneous instruction by teacher to students in person, and students engaged remotely. So that, that's too bad, but we're working on that, hopefully that will change. A number of model curriculums are in process. So the U S Black and Latino History Curriculum is the one that you're probably most familiar with, in my reports prior. Um, they're adding quite a few curriculums to this. My impression is that the curriculum will be designed for the districts, just like U S Black and Latino History was a circ curriculum designed for the districts. These will also be designed for the districts. We have a Native American class now, so we're just gonna have to, you know, see how that dovetails, because we have a really good one. But Native American Studies, Asian American and Pacific Islander Studies, LGBTQ and Other Sexual Orientation and Gender Identity Studies, Climate Change, Personal Financial Management and Financial Literacy, and there's one, Mr. Mari, it's the only way to go right there. Military Service of Experience, and Experience of the American Veterans, Civics and Citizenship, Principles of Social Emotional Learning, and Racism. This is taken verbatim. So, and I try to provide the public act it came from, so that you can actually find it yourself. And so these are coming online in the next couple of years. We're gonna have to start to plan for them the way we did U S B L H. So um, you know, right now, twenty five, twenty six, the new law requires boards to add to include Asian American Pacific A P I studies in their social studies curriculum. Um, and then you see kind of in these other years where the other stuff falls more or less. So you'll, we have a lot of work to do, we have a lot to get in place. You know, certain classes that are gonna fall in the social sciences realm, if we're offering sections of this class, then we cannot offer sections of other things, unless we are going to increase the number of people that provide the instruction. So something will probably, you know, have to be, you know, have to review what's, you know, what we currently have and, and see how to adjust to it. Also consider that, as we talk about budgets. But when we talk about these kinds of things, most of this falls into the high school zone. And as we've talked about a couple of times, the K five zone, we're gonna have a lot to pick up in the K five zone, is the S R grants end. So when the S R grants end and so on, we have a number of positions K five to pick up, just to maintain the sizes we have. And so it's gonna be, we're gonna have to really do some thinking about that, as we move forward. Para educator development, thank you, State of Connecticut, we have to give eighteen hours to every para. We, you know, pares are awesome, they do awesome work for the district. In the past, the pares have gotten to select, you know, kind of what they do with respect to this. We did have it in contract once, to do three full days. And I don't think that was desired. So the most recent contracts don't include that, but now the State of Connecticut has said you must give eight, you know, eighteen hours of training. So those eighteen hours either come from inside the school day, and they're, they're pulled from their placements, or outside of the contractual day, in which case you're paying. And you can't, you can't require someone beyond their contractual day. So this is a bit of a conundrum, if you multiply it by hundred some odd plus pares, that is not a small thing. What we're trying to do is find tools like Compass, which allow para to take it, you know, on their own time. They can take a certain number of hours on their own time. But that's still time, you know, during contractual day that we have to come out of. You being a kid, that you're gonna have to pull them out of that to do this. So um, there's a number of ways you could do that. I view it as a, an opportunity to flex our logistical capabilities. You know, it's a challenge.
Question, on our half days, can we set up like a workshop for them to go to to get care, that they go home?
Usually, their contractual, they're, they're our.
It's the, um.
It ends.
Yeah.
They leave. Now, we would say, pretty please stay. But they could also say. So I think it's gonna be a combination of, we'd love to do this with you on the R days, and there'll be a percentage of people who don't. And they'll have to figure out, you know, outside of that. So that's not too long. You know, we'll have to do that, pares spending, P P T needs is, is not a huge, huge thing. Um, but again, that's, they're gonna come out of classrooms for that type of thing.
Could I ask a question about the training?
Yeah.
Um, is it possible to double them up, so perhaps a less experienced para who trained from a more experienced para? And maybe be focused on a more difficult or a more, a child who requires more?
Could, it's just, you, if I'm that more experienced para, you know, so are you gonna pay me to create the lesson?
Oh, I see.
Because I'm training, I'm personal, I mean, I should become creative, creating train. Because I'm not mentoring, I'm trained, I'm not shadowing.
I get you.
Right, and so the difference is, you know, mentoring, shadowing, is being with them, training them is some battery of supporting.
I see.
Yeah. It's a good question, though. That's why, you know, some of these I looked at and then I just, you know, kind of rocked back and forth for a minute. So then statewide sexual disawareness, that type of thing. You know, this is just adding more training, you know, and it's reasonably understandable why they'd want to do it, bystander training. So we have to add that to the battery that we give our staff, that type of thing. And it is expanded to more than just teachers, now it's all school staff that must receive this. That just means we have to do more training, we have to make sure that we track that. So these things are, you know, adding on to what we are currently tracking and doing, we have to do this as well. So when things like that pop up, it, it's totally understandable why that would be needed a hundred percent. I just think back like, well, how, with the amount of time we have and the number of people we have, you know, who, who, and how? And so that's, you know, that's why some of it's trying to figure that out. And the similar things here, you go, here, child, do the same kind of thing, we're just putting more, you know, more things, we have to distribute electric copy of the guidelines in different places, so that's not some of the people that we have to hire. Um, behavior intervention meetings, the teacher can request one now, which is fine. You know, this is not that different, because we have S A T, we have what's called Student Assistant Teams, Student Intervention Teams. Teachers can bring them to those teams as well, but they can, you know, this is putting it codifying in law, that they can actually request the behavior evaluation to, you know, be done. Model students, work release, this is fine, it just means we have to monitor, you know, if we're gonna help provide work release study program. Have to make sure we have our ducks in a bowl and that, and that goes along with some of the pathway stuff we're doing, so not terrible there. Pathways, this is, this has the same term as our pathways. It talks a bit more about occupational licenses, we have to make sure that our, any training that we provide, we also help them obtain their occupational licenses. So that means we're probably gonna have to kind of update our partnerships, relationships in our own curriculum, make sure that whatever we do allows them to then, you know, obtain their license, one variety of different things. So we're working towards that. Our pathways will help with that. Ventilation inspection, we kind of already talked about this, you know, temperatures, some of that stuff. So um, we have to make sure we're in compliance with this. We talked a little bit about it already, and we have to post things to the site. Transportation, I know you're excited about this one, a ten year contract. You can go ten years rather than five. Um, that's, thank you, State of Connecticut. So you can go now, that's the big one there. Um, here's a fun one, zero emissions are required. So the zero emissions buses will be required by January first, twenty thirty.
And that's why they had grants or whatever that they had not that long ago, that was when you could, we would have gotten a lot of us.
Actually, I think it's twenty forty, but it's still a day. We have to be, we have to follow the environmental justice community is defined in the law, a hundred percent zero emissions. But I think we would be able to, you know, for tolerant, it would be something in the twenty forty, so. Zero, all buses must be zero emissions by twenty forty, and we have to comply with the environmental justice community stuff by twenty forty.
Our buses are now.
So um, you know, that's been eighteen years from now, probably not this board's thing to carry, but it's kind of student truancy. Really what this does is just more the things that we have to do to make sure that we're addressing it. The State of Connecticut used to assign probation officers, used to follow up a lot more. They don't do as much of that now, except in certain circumstances. So we would have to create and have options for behavioral health interventions, things like that. So we're gonna have to kind of further evolve what we do. But the, the basic thing that's happening here is the truancy and the handling of truancy is becoming much more on every single board side. In having to make sure you have, you know, behavior and screening resources and so on, and relationships and contracts with people that can help. So we do that, and we have it doing it, we should probably have to expand that beyond certain populations to everyone. And the concept of barely, you know, it comes at a cost, but it's required to make sure we do them. Withholding time for physical, you know, you can't withhold a fifty, or it's not extensively, so that's not terribly. It's not gonna be monetary for us, but it's, it's a positive, we're on disability terminology updating that, now your parent can ask per class rank. Initial products being available in student bathrooms, that's a great thing, you know, it should be. That's gonna be at a cost, uh, grades three through twelve, and it has to also be in uh, male bathrooms too, because there's sort of the gender nonspecific elements, you know, kind of situation in, in most buildings. So you have to make sure all bathrooms are, I would say, element in consideration. You know, you have to make sure that we're covering the bases here. So that's gonna mean supplies, and keeping those supplies up to date. And, you know, supplies up, making sure you have that. Technical education, this is not changing terribly for us. Minimum duty for your lunch period, that did change a lot for us, five, five minutes, you know, out of every day, times a hundred and eighty-two days. Um, however, understandably, you know, the, the teachers ended a thirty minute lunch, and so the state was, you know, doing that. It's just, it's not so much the what, it was just the timing of it dropped on us in the middle of the summer, when we had to adjust. So that, that required a couple of things, which I will. Professional healthcare certificate, this is not gonna affect us that much provision or anything, just lets people keep their certificates longer. If they haven't taught, it allows them to do it, they're trying to make the pool of people who can teach bigger. And they're trying to incentivize staying around, because you have to pay for your re-up on your certs most of the time. So it's having people pay less. And it's good for people, keeping people in the career. Instructor permit, it's not that big for us. Freedom of speech. This is an interesting one, not financially impactful, but it does, you know, prohibit its employers from disciplining or discharging an employee or threatening to do so because of the employee refuses to attend employer-sponsored meetings, listen to speech or view communications primarily intended to convey the employer's opinion about religious or political matters, which is kind of interesting. So it defines political matters as matters relating to elections or political, I would, I would think this would have already been something that it did too. They're, they're putting it in language. So if your employer tries to have you sit around for a, a political party, or a proposal to change regulation or things like that, or join a political party or support a political party, you can, they can. Uh, or join a political party or support a political party, you can, um, they can say no. And then religious matters, matters relating to religious affiliation practices. And the decision to join and support any particular religious organization. So if I'm trying to make everybody go Catholic, you can say I'm a. Or any other religion for that matter, just chose that one, that's not where my background, going Catholic. Now it's mine, so I'll just start it out there. Um, so picking from what I know, so that's the kind of thing that you can't, you know, you can't impose your thing on anybody else. And if you do that in some organization, they have the right to say, I don't have to sit around for that. Domestic violence, um, you know, this is, there's protections, they, you know. Yeah, you have to just. You cannot deny an employee reasonable leave for any of these things. Alright, so you think that's probably the case before. Mental health awareness day. Um, the governor is now required to proclaim, May twenty sixth. Uh, to get outside and play for children's mental health day. We'll look forward to that. Yep, so we'll see when that gets proclaimed and there'll be exercises and it'll be a fun day. Um, we have to provide annual notice, um. And that, that probably will be a small thing, that'll take probably instructional day, but that's kind of like it goes. Student trauma and foreign practices, um, you know, new laws. Actually ask us to, um, make sure that we're reporting on and assessing. Um, these individual children's situation with respect to student trauma, you know, um. And you'll notice that the next piece here, it, that's not, there is actually a requirement of the Eastern Highland Health District to. Provide a survey for students that is anonymous for schools. So that's coming up next. Somehow wedged in between these two things is the family care coordinator. This is the kind of thing that happens where there's a homeless coordinator, McKinney Bento. There's climate coordinator, you know, and what happens is when they add coordinators, what tends to happen in this district is. Yours truly becomes the coordinator, like I am the McKinney Bento homeless coordinator. Um, because, you know, when you get these, people don't take on these roles from them. If you're gonna have somebody take on a role, there's probably a stipend around the corner from any bargaining unit. So, okay, so it depends, um. You know, if it seems like it's a major addition to workload, they're gonna look for something, you know, TBA or others could say, well, in a contract. You know, we would like to make this a stipend position or something like that, so. Um, this, this now is gonna be in place, probably yours truly will be that to begin with, and then we'll work it out. Um, but that's, that's how that falls, and I'm not the coordinator for everything, for instance, there's others who are the five, oh, who are coordinator and. You know, uh, sexual harassment, um, you know, that type of thing, I'm not those. But I am just about everything, other things fall in like this, would probably fall towards me. Um, mental health plan for athletes. Um, athletes have to be evaluated, have access and screening. Um, communication management, crisis intervention services, medication services, um, so that's coming. And, um, student identification cards, uh, beginning in twenty-three, twenty-four, we have to make sure they have them. And make sure that the suicide prevention lifeline number is on them. Um, and that we have to make sure that, uh, you know, that we keep up with the information on those. Um, optional, oh, oh, sorry, opioid antagonists, this is just, uh. This is just trying to help our nurses and everything, um, to. To help address opioid issues if they arise on an emergency basis. And without prior written authorization, we have, um, Narcan, things like that, and that we can administer them. And so that's just giving them, that's codifying and making it easier for. Nurses and us as a school system to make sure that we identify people that can administer Narcan, they're not gonna get. In trouble because they weren't given prior, you know, prior authorizations. Narcan is one of those things where you can't wait for a prior authorization to use it, just gotta use it. Um, and so this is just more about that, if, if anything, it's just regulating process, so here's the one that I was mentioning before. A survey containing school social concerning. School social workers, psychologists, councils, nurses, licensed marriage, there's, okay, this isn't exactly what I'm sorry about, start though down, but this is another one. So we're going to be getting through the CSDE a survey, um, that. We report out on how many of these people we employ. And then also report out on, um, you know, um. The services we provide, which by the way, when we're audited for the number of people we have and the services we provide, usually what's coming. Is some requirement for a certain level of service. So they'll audit that, and then probably at the end of that audit period, there'll be something, the board or a law will be. Put out there that says that you have to have a certain number, that's probably where, where they're headed with that one. This is the one I think I was thinking of, the Connecticut School Health Survey. Um, for public act twenty-two eighty-seven, section one, two, three, one through three. Requires DPH beginning in the twenty-two, twenty-three year, this one. To administer the Connecticut School Health Survey to students in grades nine through twelve, provided DPH receives funding from the CDC. I don't know where that is yet, but the DPH will provide guidelines to boards of that, you know, board of that is synonymous here at basically districts. Um, in the administration of the survey, uh, to high schools randomly selected, and we do this for other things like, um. With the, um, National Associate, uh, National Assessment of, um, of academic process, progress. Is also one we have to do, we have to give, whoever they tell us we have to give it to, and that's a federal one. So this one is basically if our, if we're randomly selected, which I do find sometimes is interesting how, how often we are randomly selected. But we must fit a demographic, so DPH, you know, will randomly select groups and then provide the survey to the. School, and then you have to provide that. Um, so parents will have the opportunity to exclude their children from participation. The survey must be anonymous, but it has to be provided, it's my understanding if you are selected. You know, eligibility criteria for displacement courses, we'll work through that, that'll probably be just a course adjustment thing. But you can see that most of this is either, it's stuff that are adding roles to people who have roles already. It's financial implications, you know, creation of courses or adding people. Um, it's additional reporting, which has to come from someone, usually it's the people that are already there. Um, or it requires something new with respect to, um, you know, surveying or something. So you can see that most of this is adding in one form or another. Um, and finally, we kind of end with the identification of gifted and talented, this is a couple of bullets, but it's no small thing. What this really is, is that, you know, it's kind of a move in the direction of. Uh, taking what is now a designation of gifted and making it more like a special, you know, more like some of the other special education identifications. So right now, if you're identified as special education, um, you know, that IEP has things in it, you must, you must do. Gifted has generally been, they get an APPT IEP, but it's, you know, if the resources exist, here's what we have. It's heading more in the direction of, um, you know, more scaffolding around that. Which means it's heading more in the direction of the kinds of things that other students of special education get. Programs, you know, uh, assignments of consulting resources, um, possibly out placements, you know. I mean, in the worst case, kind of joke scenario, where, you know, my child deserves joke, you know, or something, so it's. It's kind of a space that's gonna have to be navigated, and the policy committee took that up today. And, um, they're also looking for a broad definition of, uh, what gift it is. So, you know, if you think about it from a Sternberg Gardner point of view, there's like eleven, could be up from three or eleven intelligences. And one can runs only way of looking at it too, it's not limited to one thing, it's many things, so this could be a very wide net. And, and it could mean that a lot of people could say, I, I want to have a, I have a child, I have a PPT. Gonna have my child identified under special education as gifted, and then the services begin, the management begins, caseworkers. Case managers are kind of loaded with what we have, if we're adding more, they would have to manage to get more of them. Especially, you know, assignments, so that's, that's it mostly. Um, a couple of other trickling things, but these are the bigger, you know, the biggest ones that I'm seeing.
Any questions for more members?
Or comment, but, um. Thanks again for putting this together, Dr. Will, I know, just looking at all the new things for curriculum, we don't have a lot to discuss. Uh, a few months, um, question though with that, so I was reading through a paragraph, and if that is verbatim what the law. Says, it's kind of a little. Vague in my opinion, like, are, are each one of those? Things an actual class were supposed to have, or is that something that just needs to be incorporated somewhere?
Well, I should clarify that on that particular one, when I said verbatim, that was from Shipman.
Yeah, oh.
Verbatim from Shipman.
Okay.
So when you go back and look at the public law, you can see, you know, where they use racism. That word, those terms were taken from a Shipman's report.
Okay. Do you know, she answered my question though, or is?
So, sorry.
Um, like, is there, like, let's take that for example, is there now going to be a. Requirement that we offer a class specifically on racism, or does that just need to be?
So what I gather from what is there is that for Asian American, um, Pacific Islander?
Yes.
In this cert will provide that.
Okay.
Uh, and certain other ones there, yes, other ones, I agree with you, racism is ambiguous.
Okay.
But I don't know what that, but that's not how they're defining the court, like the courses, they have actual curriculum that they're gonna design. For the AAPI one.
Okay.
And I think for the LGBTQ one, things like that. And those, well, they are, from my understanding, AAPI is already on its way, the other ones will probably be the same path of the US DLH.
Yeah.
And, and my read of the actual, uh. Law that Canada is, they're not incredibly specific, and, you know, they, they say that there must be a curriculum. Addressing blah, 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 and then they rely on two of these other agencies to come in and actually fill that out, the law doesn't. Put it real clear.
You know, I would say from experience, that how this involves. With US DLH, it was a similar thing, and that it ended with. A curriculum that was invented by the state.
I think it'll get fleshed out of it, it's.
Yeah, so that, I think you can expect that with the API and the LGBTQ piece, um, the rap, lots of, and I, and the personal financial one. But some of the other ones, I don't, I don't know yet much about the. Military service and experience of American veterans on that.
Yeah.
But I know the API is, that's, they've already started with that. I was gonna work there.
Yeah, no, again, it's something that. We'll get more information on and definitely we'll need to talk a lot about it, I mean, there's some things in there that I think are good, some things that. I think it's good we touch on, but I wouldn't recommend that we have a class on, uh, but either way, you know, as that evolves. And as you pointed out, it's going, it could very likely bump other things out. Given constraints of our resources, um, cause that's a lot, you know, that's in that paragraph. Uh, so, well, we'll definitely need to talk more about that.
And, and more.
Yeah.
Did read through it, not just the paragraph that, that Dr. Will had pointed out there, um, but the rest of them. And like, you know, the shipment, uh, presentation we provided to you, uh, there's also, you know, what's actually in the statutes and laws. Uh, so as we're starting to find out, in fact, like Dr. Will had said, in policy, we started. Addressing some of these new things that are getting kicked out, that, that say specifically you must have a policy that does this. And as we're starting to dig into it, we're finding out that that policy actually reaches over to curriculum type issues, they all reach over to, uh, FFC. And communication, you know, we mentioned the communication a couple of times in today's meetings. Uh, so I would envision, much like Dr. Will had said, we're going to have this spider web. And other stuff committees that are trying to figure out what we need to do and how we help.
If you look at the bullets below the main big paragraph, you see that I did break apart, like API required. You know, that we offered, climate change required, we offered. Um, you know, so it does, you can see the ones that are required versus like, uh, there, there isn't one here about racism by itself. But the courses that are listed, for instance, you can see which ones are required in the language. Okay, so I did break that down, there was some bullets under the various acts that, you know, connected them. Okay, so you'll see here, I say required. You know, um, yeah, tune it must make available, blah, 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 you know, to the general science team, but you'll see. Where, where I put required is where it was reflected is required. Yeah. Yeah, climate change this one. Requires rather than, than allows, the language is quite is different now.
Yeah. That one kind of sounds a little bit more like, it needs to be covered in any class that exists, but who knows?
It's right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Be taught as, taught as part.
Yeah.
But we'll have to rewrite them, you know.
Is that not the topic covered currently, like I remember discussing?
They're gonna be providing outlines, so taught in the way that we probably teach it at the moment, but. Whatever they're gonna provide from the regional centers, as like the models, is probably what we would end up. You know, modifying curriculum to. That's the best answer I can give to that, I mean, I, I think that it'll, it'll look like the US BLH. When you're talking about things like the API, I, I don't know what that will look like. But it, it does seem pretty clear that what they're gonna do is create what they think is a model. And that sometimes is the first step towards, you know. Making something, you know, important.
For the, um, remote learning one, I know we talked about this in communications too. But then it was like some clarifications came out from Cave and I saw the news about. Some adjustments to the remote learning, kind of prohibit, prohibition of it. That they're going to now make allowances. That they're going to make allowances for maybe children, the things that we were discussing.
That is definitely where they're headed, yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of people upset about it, I wouldn't be surprised, I didn't, I didn't see anything today, I saw it, it was kind of very, but.
Yeah, there was.
I wouldn't be surprised that that is, you know, that they, that that would be coming, because many people were upset.
Yeah, it looks like they're going to allow it in certain circumstances, but I didn't get to see the entire story, except I think it was like five or six, but it looks like the teachers do need it.
Relentless, and they'll modify the law.
Yeah, just saying that dual instruction just truly doesn't work for them.
Oh, no, that's, and that's, in a general sense, that's true. I mean, you know, we, we saw that, the, trying to. In elementary school, I, I don't know, they're saints, I don't know how, I mean, across the district, but I just think about it. Can you imagine teaching half your kids in kindergarten? Like virtually and the other half in front of you? I mean, I don't know how that's even really possible, and they managed to do the best they could with it. So dual instruction in that kind of example doesn't work. But I think, you know, as you said, that there's a lot of people that are really upset about how this came down and wanted to keep. The option for somebody who was hospitalized. And get that child to, to moment.
Children, I mentioned children with high anxiety, having trouble transitioning back into the classroom, being.
They'll have to make that more specific, some of the, you know. They'll probably need to come up with some very specific things about what, what that would be.
This one, Don't Tell My John Seven, I mean, there doesn't have to be, I mean, you can't do that. But I think they have to expand, like John mentioned anxiety or, you know, whether it be a medical condition where, except they're hospitalized or. Um, but I would assume there's gonna be some sort of criteria or.
Experience a lot of trauma and might have designation in the DSM five for some. Uh, you know, some anxiety, uh, struggle. That I think you might qualify under certain circumstances for something versus, you know, with, or. We try to keep, we try to get kids in school. You know, if they're a little anxious, we try to, we don't want that to become. Become a thing now that, you know, that can enable itself. So we have to be careful about how that we approach this, in my opinion. But I think it's, uh, it's very valuable in certain circumstances, and that, that can be true for someone struggling in that way. Whether it's for, you know, with an anxiety challenge or with, uh, you know, that's just as serious as some, as a medical challenge, you know, it's, it's the same type of thing. But I think if some kids sometimes that we've had to kind of go worse out of car, or, you know. This is the school day, and Tom, Mr. Johnson, you've seen it yourself, the, you know, kids who go, or anxious, you know, that's a different thing, and so. We don't want to, to be that you can tune in on channel eight, don't have to bother coming in. Uh, but keep it for kids that are really treating a situation that is fucking.
One other quick thing, I guess I wasn't done. That's okay.
Well, anyone else?
Yeah.
Before you go in?
Okay. Um, this is a question for, for Jen, actually, so, uh. This is a communications committee working on a letter regarding, um. Band-aids, was that still work in progress, I'm just curious what the status was of that.
Yeah, it's just got a lot longer.
Yes, so I can give my communication update. Yes, so I can give my communication update now. But the, I mean, the short answer is, is yes, we went over a lot more of these changes, it's interesting how many things have changed since we started talking about this a couple of months ago. So basically, we went over in the, in a little more detail in certain aspects, what we're talking about tonight, uh, I think we'll come back to, what do you guys want?
Okay. That'd be a good discussion thing to see that once it's ready. Especially after this.
I, I had actually discussed some of these in policy today, and I had suggested, um, now that would be helpful if Dr. Willard could assign some price tags some of these changes, then it might be helpful, helpful for us for the budget and budget season, so I, I was thinking perhaps if that wouldn't be too much of a burden, Dr. Willard, maybe to project what the new changes or the new implementations are going to cost, at least for the next calendar year.
We did talk about that in communications too, I think it was after you stepped out of our meeting, same thing.
And the thing about this stuff is it crosses your domains, you know, there's policy, officials, fashion, visions, communications, so we'll, I will do that, but when we, when we can talk about it broadly, or more, more specifically broadly here, and then even more specific things, okay, just when you have more time.
Yeah.
But that, yeah, we definitely do that.
Perfect. Let's move on to the second item.
Oh, okay. All right, um. It's the data portal piece. So, um, we could talk about this, just a refresher. Some time back, we created the data portal. The, the data portal for Talend is designed to be a tool that the, the public can see this, sort of, I can see this. It's updated regularly. The thing about our data portal that I think is nice is that we actually, um, will put the data up there as it comes, and it's, and it's data that is in a variety of domains. So, you know, we're not reporting just a standardized score from a certain assessment. You know, we will show information on dibbles, math fluency, and then, uh, reading, uh, and all of those things, so you get a real picture for not only the kinds of things that we do for assessments in the district and what kids' progress is on them, but you also get a historical view of what, you know, what it was prior, so you can scroll down, kind of like, uh, I modeled it a little bit after the dashboard in that you can scroll backwards to the, um, prior data sets, so it gives you a kind of a picture of moving back in time and then forward where we will end. So to give you an example, and I'll, I'll try to just be do summaries, because you can read this yourself and then, you know, come back and curriculum, we talked about it a little bit today, we could follow up, additional questions. Some committee might give us more time, but to give you an example, like the, uh, the latest from, uh, August, we were able to collect uh, the information from the dibbles, which by the way, you know, when I use these terms, you can see at the bottom, you know, what I'm referring to. Dynamic indicators, basic literacy skills that we use and this was used dibbles to see where the kids are, and it helps us project their success in other things. Um, and so we did notice that improved performance in these areas also did reflect it, you know, was reflected in our group performance on standardized assessments as well. Uh, we're still not out of the pandemic impact, I, I think you saw that I posted a article or a couple of things from the state of Connecticut that talked about the state still having to recover from the pandemic and that most school systems still hadn't fully coming out, come out of that yet. That's true for us too, but what's good about this is you can kind of see the, you know, the legend and the ratings. And, you know, all of the kids met their goals and exceeded, many of them, if not most were exceeding their goals by, if I can blow this up a little bit more. You know, they actually had a number of performance levels and points above their goal. So, you know, this shows the delta from the beginning of the year in the dibbles, this shows the, uh, percentage above the goals set for those populations. And, um, you know, this is actually a very good uh, a good thing to end the year on with the dibbles, um, good data showing that the kids did make a lot of progress in our reading, coming back from the pandemic impacts that we had before. I guess not quite all the way, but, um, making a lot of progress. So, um, you can also see in here that, um, the S box scores are posted just below, um, this. And you can see that in, and I'll summarize this for math too, but, um, ELA and math, the scores increased in grades three, four, five, six, and seven, so almost all the grades tested improved their performance. Grade eight, we're still trying to figure out what is going on there, but grade eight actually had an impact like that in a number of different places, um. It's also hard to get the eighth graders to take the S back to it was seriously, it's also why the high schools jettisoned, the state jettisoned the S back at the high school level and went with the SAT, um, because the SAT kids were committed to that for, for college reasons and other reasons, the older they get, they're a little harder to, to motivate, and things like, you know, when they don't see a direct connection. So we have a little bit of work to do there, but we did put in the interim assessment blocks, the IAVs, as we call them, which is a method of teaching and then progress monitoring, teaching progress monitoring, you know, testing, then adjusting to the kids' performance. Um, you know, variety of areas, both math and ELA, and so so using these interim assessment blocks, that's part of the reason why, you know, the efforts of our teachers and our curriculum supervisors and principals and much stuff, that we were able to get those games. So all of the SAT scores improved, I'm sorry, well, they did too, I'll cover that in a minute. But the, um, S back scores improved across the, um, all grades three to seven. Um, but not quite at the pre-pandemic levels. So that's just an example of how you can see that the dibbles data set, um, demonstrated that things that we also saw in the standardized testing, and if you scroll backwards, you can see where things were. And you see these brown, you know, kind of brown, yellow areas, those are areas that were falling outside of the range of, um, they're yellow, so they were more in our concern zone, you can see it over here, this is earlier in the year. You can see what, where the kids in the yellow rank were falling. So we were able to make progress from that midpoint as well. And if you scroll down enough, you'll see the earlier, earlier, earlier scores and you'll see how things were, it got better. So that was good. Um, then in math, similar things, the math data is there. And most of this was posted back in August, I usually will send out something to the board when I'm posting these things, but again, it's available to the public as well. Um, we are a strong SAT performer, this is a variety of tables broken up by different ways of looking at the SAT. So you can look at the SAT performance as an average score, you can look at the SAT performance and how many hit, uh, three or fours, you know, met or exceeded, um, the DIRD schools and, you know, there's four or five tables with different kinds of splits of the data, but you'll see that on virtually all the different ways of splitting the data. Talend is a very high performer in SAT for the demographic reference group we're in, DIRD. So, um, you know, we, we were able to get a really great, you know, performance, you know, at the high school level for this, and this has a lot to do with, I think, the supports the kids are given, we have special programming, um, it's, you know, kids that have, um, maybe, you know, financial struggles or if our freedom of just lunch status also get additional free support and so on. So this, this is showing, you know, dividends in the efforts that are being made. So that's good news from an SAT perspective, um. Similarly, here in math, what we use for math fluency data to try to explain what this looks like, I know these numbers are a little confusing, when you're moving from the red zone, which is having some math fluency challenges to the green, um, in the beginning of the year, only two percent were in the green for grade one, just to give you a way of how to read this. And by the end of your assessment, for grade one, sixty-one percent were in the green. So it shows a lot of progress, and you know, a lot of movement out of the red concern zone into the yellow and the green zones. Um, and, you know, that kind of progress is significant. And we did see that manifest itself in standardized assessments too. Again, we're still fighting against that pandemic, we're not at the pre-pandemic level, but we've made a lot of progress. So this data shows that a lot of kids made that shift. You know, going from average speed and strategy application, you know, got a lot better from the beginning to the end of the year, and remember, they're coming off at the beginning of last year, the end of like the cold thing where a lot of kids were out quite a bit. Um, and so those absences did affect everything, but, um, the overall progress was, was really great. And so it manifested itself in the SAT, oh, I'm sorry, S box scores as well, as you can see, you know, you'll be able to kind of look at that, this summarizes, once again, in math, in grades three, four, five, six, and seven, performance increased. Grade eight, um, you know, was again the outlier here, it's just something we're going to have to take a hard look at and see uh, why it ended up that way. Um, but overall, it, it's good news, you know, heading in the right direction in these areas. And, you know, we've, uh, we have to thank the teachers and the hard work they have done and the, um, and the supervisors, the staff, and, and of all kinds. Looking at, uh, science, this one, you know, I think we struggled a bit in science, mainly, I, I think some of the reasons for that, you know, not terrible, terrible, but it, you know, we were doing very well, I think we took a little bit of a bump. Um, nearly every district, um, you know, had some increases and some decreases, but in the DIRD and the average test results, you know, we were down in grades from twenty nineteen. And I think part of that is because science is a very hands-on kind of thing. And in the pandemic, they couldn't put their hand, you know, couldn't do the labs, couldn't do the same kinds of things we were doing. Uh, so you'll notice that we really were cranking along there, and I think because a lot of this was hands-on stuff, a lot of the curriculum was hands-on stuff. When you couldn't do the hands-on stuff, those connections were harder to make. Um, and so we put in data here that it's, it's not abysmal, but we have to pay attention to what's going on here. Um, and so it wasn't just us, some of the others felt that too, the DIRD saw decreases in grade eleven, for instance. Uh, grade eleven kids probably, again, you know, they're, they're not necessarily at that point committed to doing yet another thing that they probably didn't feel like they, you know, they were invested in, it wasn't going to affect their college at all. But, um, to blow it up, but you blow it up, you can kind of see where they, where populations fell. You know, where we might have been up a little bit, but we weren't up in most places, you can see that we were up from twenty twenty-one in a few places, but most of the older kids were, were down. The, uh, grade, grade eleven was down. The, so this little Christmas tree graph kind of shows where the, the red is what we're concerned with, you know, what we're concerned about, the green is, it's generally okay, I'm trying to work through that. So pretty good on, um, you know, the, the math, we're showing rebound, uh, reading showing rebounds, uh, dibbles doing great, math fluency doing great. Hit a bump with science, we're trying to work that one out. And then there's other things in here that I'm trying to update, um, social and emotional welfare, you know, there's not a ton of, of things on that. So this is, the, um, survey is about risky behavior. It's not a mental health inventory. So you don't, you know, that, that is just going to talk about kind of, uh, trends in smoking marijuana or trends in using alcohol, and we use those trends then to, you know, create curriculum responses, dare programming, for instance. We're going to be able to re-initiate that through our efforts this year with the police, and we also are working on, you know, we can adapt the, uh, skills for our lessons course accordingly. Um, so, you know, the state of Connecticut, that CSD one going through DPH may provide something that they give us data about, and then we can start putting more data in here. Uh, but right now, you know, that's what we've got. I mean, as I am able to put more information there, I will. Um, end of year survey results could also be data I can put in there, because we use some of that to plan for our programming. And those are given to all students' parents, all students and parents, um, and teachers, uh, all the way through the district, but it's mostly, uh, it's mostly parents in the three, five, so, um, to, I think, a great K one, two, they're too young to boost, you know, the response, so we don't do that for the kids in the elementary, what we do to the kids in the middle of high, a little bit, TIS, and it's on ours. Um, and it's end of year, and you see it every year, the same thing comes out every year and toggles between the schools, so put some of that data there too. This is the SAT scores, um. These are where our kids graduate to, I have to update that, because from the end of last year, this needs to be updated. Uh, and then this talks about overall pandemic impacts to, um, the district. You can see, you know, and you can see us or others, that the twenty eighteen to now, you're still, you know, we're still on our way back up, and that's not, that's true of, uh, most districts right now. And the state of Connecticut put out a report on that too, that I shared earlier. But I don't have updated transportation yet, I am working on that, we should have at the end of this month some transportation data. But I, uh, I said I would include that in the dashboard, so I have, but this is what you saw before. It's what was in the, uh, this is a reflection of what was in the board meeting last time we talked about it. I will have updated transportation data for the number, number, um, as we finish. So that is the data portal, and the thing about it is, we look at this, we kind of come back to this quarterly in, um, in our meeting here, but this is updated when I get it. So as soon as I get additional updated data, I put it in here, even though we might not be looking at it as a board again until, you know, December or something, I think, or January, whenever there's some quarters.
Any questions on that? Uh, thank you very much, let's go to the next item.
Okay, okay. So, I think there'll be plenty of people who want to talk about this.
A lot of questions.
Yeah, so.
Well, you did go through this on FFC.
I did, so it's embedded, no, actually, I gave it over to, to the script and to comment on it in a few months.
That's what I'm saying.
But I'll just kind of overview that, the documents are available.
We're gonna have to borrow.
They're gonna, you know, click and you can see them all.
I don't have the supporting document, sorry, um, but do you have the, um?
Yeah, there is the, uh, yeah, this, if you go to the, um, the agenda with attachments, it has all the supporting, and they're in a chart. I'll scroll in and see that.
This, I don't know, I hadn't borrowed that, I couldn't read that. I haven't laid that.
So, uh, this has all of the.
Oh, yeah, that, can you turn it the other way?
No. No.
No. All right, well.
Paper package.
So basically, the, all the pink are, um, some of the new stuff that we've added for this year, and anything that was on this last year has stayed, correct, Dr. Willard? I don't think we took anything off.
No, so, no, I don't think so, although. Like, there was a, there was one communication where some things are funded separately.
The business lab, I don't remember. Did we talk about why? So basically, a couple of the new items are the district-wide radar reporters, we talked about that a bunch, that is, I believe, so that there is no lock-in lockdown mistake, we need to make sure that the, um, radios can't be kind of set off erroneously. So that was a high priority. And the other, uh, high priority was the man trap at the main entrance of TIS, and Ashley had asked earlier, Dr. Willard, does TMS have a man trap?
Um, so that, that's, no, it doesn't.
Okay.
But that would be something they're looking at, trying to.
Okay, so it's not on here yet, but.
Yeah, you know, you can shut the doors at the top, but you can't do it the way you can do it at CIS.
So, uh, the TMS, um, auditorium seating, it's just very old and needs to be replaced, the THS field needs new water irrigation system. That's the lower field, not obviously the turf field. The, um, THS cafeteria replacements, that's not out until, um, twenty twenty-eight. Um, we talked about that, I think, briefly, or maybe I just read it, that, um, they're hard to maneuver, hard to close and open. Um, so I think the thought was by twenty twenty-eight, they'll be twenty-some odd years old, so that they should be at the end of their useful life at that point. Anyway, um, there was stage audio replacements, lighting replacements. The TMS concrete patio needed to be replaced, that was in, um, bad shape. The THS room sixty-five photography improvement, that was specifically to basically convert the existing room, which was more of a darkroom from, from film to kind of move that more over into the digital age and have the equipment that would be helpful for the, the new photography class, which now at the high. that would be helpful for the, the new photography class, which now at the high school with the new teacher is more digital. And I believe that was taking out, um, some kind of an island or something as well that is not needed, and then putting more, um, workstations with, um, the equipment. The HVAC addition, the one point two million, that's obviously gonna be a big one. That is, as of now, we believe, is state mandated, and I think we were kind of hoping, because it's such a large number, that that will, there will be some sort of grants or something for that, because that's a rather large undertaking, because our T I S and T M S, they don't have, uh, air conditioning.
And you can file for some lovely reimbursement.
Um, so that, that's a big, a big, um, add to our budget.
And just as Ms. Griffin is talking, I'm trying to squib some of these, so you can see that in that, it has narratives there too, so, if you're looking from home.
So, yeah, so don't quote me on anything, I'm trying to remember.
No, no, you're doing a great job, you're doing a great job, and that's also available in the package.
Um, okay, and then the T I S, T M S seclusion rooms, special ed upgrades, that was, I think, in T I S specifically. I remember they needed to be updated for ceilings and walls, um, more than what was there now. Um, T M S pole vault and high jump mats apparently are in very poor shape. Um, let's see, I think those were all the new adds. So, um, just to kind of backtrack to fiscal year twenty three, I believe, Dr. Will, the, the stuff that's on here then for twenty-two and twenty-three, um, window glass replacement, bus lot paving, boiler water, and that kind of stuff, um, has that been approved and completed? Those first, like, yellow ones?
I, I'd have to check where we were on it, because it's listed for, um, the last year, so I, I would imagine that it hits, but I have to check.
Okay, because I know, um, we got the.
I know that the bus paving, I think that is, but I'll have to look.
Okay, um, uh, down a little bit further, it's highlighted in blue under fiscal year twenty-two, the Hobart High Temp Conveyor Dishwasher Sting Station. I know that that was approved with last year's capital budget. So I'm, as, you know, ho- hopefully that's coming. Um, but fiscal year twenty-three, so those are the things that would be in there now. I believe several of these were approved. I know I saw the track resurfaced at T M S. Um, the tractor, the rear loading dock, um, I believe they took out the Ford F one fifty, correct?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, it was done a little different, yeah.
Okay, so we could probably, so I'm just, just kind of thinking about things we might want to remove.
But some of the stuff to the right, you go far right, for instance, that one forty for the, uh, paving, you can see the town funded through the town paving barn.
Okay.
So, eh, you know, w- where it is in progress, I'm topping the head, I have to check repeat, but you can see how it, how it changed.
Yep, okay.
So that's off to the far right, narrative including accepted, rejected, or changed. And then you can see the new to capitalist. Um, so across there, you can see exactly what happened to each of these things, whether they're new or they were existing.
So I guess what I would suggest that we probably do is talk about, um, know if we want to talk about the older items first, and are we basically, or are, are, are we all, like, as good with that, since we've already approved all of them last year? Is there anything except for obviously the articulating lift, which always seems to be the one that comes back to haunt us? Is there anything else we should talk about that was old that we've already kind of approved? And again, Dr. Will, if you, I don't, can, um?
I mean, I do have a question, because it goes back to that man trap of, you know, if that's when we're talking about having a bond in the twenty twenty-four, forgetting that, you know, T I S man trap gone, the sixteen thousand? Thirty, I think it's thirty, um, you know, is that something that we can do sooner than wait for a longer extended period of time, like, can we move something that's old off of it, or can we fund it another way, or like, you know?
I mean, I would say if, if we've got the two high priorities of the man trap and the radio reporters, I mean, we do have our own, we have the E R F, which can be used for capital if we don't want to wait for the, um, the town to see what they approve, and then if they push it out again to that, when they were planning on bonding, I believe for a lot of our asks, it was not till twenty twenty-five. So that would just be one option, if that's something that the board feels is a major priority, and we don't want to kind of have to wait for permission from the town.
Look, I'm looking at, it's like forty, forty-eight hours, that's my estimate for the radios and the, um, the man trap. And like I said, I just don't, I don't like how some things go on this list, and they just get pushed out and pushed out and pushed out, and I feel like that is a safety concern, and I think that we should kind of take that into consideration when we look through this list, items.
Right, and then, kind of keying in along the same lines you are, is I've, I've got questions as far as the priority. You know, as, if I look down this list, there are some of these things that we've talked about that are, uh, that, that are dictated by state statutes, my air conditioning, so that was there. Uh, there are some that are apparent or very obvious, uh, security concerns, the man trap. And there, there's some that are simply, you know, a waste of resources from, uh, our emergency responders or some of our staff, like the issues with the radios. Um, when I look on here, in, in my mind, if it's critical, if the, the state says we have to have it, or it's the security of our kids, then those should be high priorities. Uh, when I look out, and I just use this as an example, I know, Ms. Griffin, we talked kind of tongue-in-cheek to discuss this one, uh, the, the tables that are on this schedule pushed out till twenty twenty-eight, which in my mind says, yeah, we want to put it on a list, but we don't really care if it happens, like kicking it that far over there. Yet, it's still a medium priority. Uh, so I, I would think if we had, i- if we really clarified what becomes a high priority, what becomes a low priority, then that would make it easier for the financial decision-makers to come in and say, okay, we've got X number of dollars, we'll fund your top whatever, uh, high priority ones versus low priority ones. It also makes it apparent when we're, when we're briefing this list to, you know, to the state or to even the public, okay, here's where our priorities are. You know, while, while the chairs, you know, and I'm not taking anything away from the, the chairs in the auditorium, uh, if I had to choose between that and a man trap, that decision's fairly obvious for me. And so our list doesn't necessarily reflect that, you have to present it. Again.
Any notes? There, there are any, um, grants or, or funding towards security items, like?
There were a lot of them before, um, with any, anything available, we would look to. But, you know, um, there is also sometimes reimbursement on projects, but in all of that, I don't know who does, or do. Now, and I think, uh, the prioritization comes for a variety of reasons, some of which is material. When, when a per, when they actually think they can get the things in for the project, some of the stuff, you know, and, and actually executed, so it's, um, also done in terms of, you know, the realistic kind of supply chain stuff and execution.
Well, we've got, and I'm just pointing to yours, because yours is the correct orientation. You know, we, we've got the opportunities as far as the years to say when we recommend doing it, and, and that's where I would, I would think organizing it based on that would tell us when we're prepared to actually do the projects. Uh, but somewhere on here, we need to identify, you know, which ones absolutely have to be done, you know?
Well, and so that, that comes down to like what your facilities people think is sort of the, you know, versus some other things too, you know, like, what, if you decide, as you've done before in some case, you want to do something, we can try. Um, and then we would have to go back and see, you know, what, why, why, what reason there might be for, uh, that being a complicated thing. Uh, I think some of these moves were not done by, you know, some of these things are financial decisions with respect to some of them, and we don't control that piece of it. What might be rolled into a bond, or what might be used, you might use Yusef or something? So, um, you know, right now, having gone through the man trap conversation directly, I know that, um, you know, there are certain things that make doing man traps and selling buildings more, more, uh, logical than others right now, and that was from, from a safety's per view of it.
And I understand that, it's just our, our tool that we're using to communicate that requires too much interpretation. I think that, there, there might be better opportunities to present our message and get our funding really narrowed in.
But I, I just, I keep going back to this of safety, um, that's pushed out to twenty twenty-four, I just, you know, I would like to see both of those a little bit sooner.
I think it's pushed out to twenty twenty-four, because that's technically the year we're talking about. We've already approved twenty-two, twenty-three.
We're gonna then, you would have to approve it, and then it doesn't get done until after about that.
Right, so we are basically asking for the stuff in twenty twenty-four.
Well, remember, this is a.
This year for next year.
This is a five-year.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. We throw this out to town, and the town ha, uh, the authority is on their side of things to decide what we would, what they will bond for. We can make recommendations to them or advocate, um, but they will ultimately have to decide where it falls within, you know, a bond structure, within what, what could, maybe a different way, like the paving was done through a town fund. That's kind of what happens here, is we say, here's the, you know, here's, and to, to Ms. Griffin's point, we're in fiscal year, you know, twenty-three, so that's really next year from a funding point of view.
So we kind of can't add to twenty-three, I think, at this point, I think we're done. So adding to twenty-four for these high priority items is the soonest we can, we can do it.
I just don't want to see those pushed out to say, okay, well, in three years, I can get a bond for all these, but really, it's, you know, to me, it's a safety item, and I feel like that should be the top priority of ensuring, you know, so that's my concern.
And to your point, Minister, I mean, we have to, we have to advocate that, you know, that, well, I understand and agree with what Mr. Griffin's saying as far as, you know, twenty twenty-four is what we're talking about with this list. If we're seeing things added to this list that are absolutely critical, then, then we should be communicating with, you know, with the council and say, listen, we've got it on here for this year, but if you have excess funds that become available, this is pulled up well.
Well, and the blue, I believe, here is, we, the blue made it match the March seventeenth of twenty twenty-two town sheet. So you see the reductions, deletions, and kind of how they, how that fell, that's the blue.
I know you're good.
So the blue was actually deleted in twenty.
Well, you'll see the narrative to the right, but it was impacted in some way by, you know, how it got processed ultimately by the town. It's not easy, but it's, I, when I do it in these meetings, I can't rotate this thing, because it's a, uh.
It's in our email, though, you sent to me.
No, it's, uh, people should be, you can rotate it at home, if you download it as a PDF, you can rotate it. I can't rotate it with this screen.
You sent me the email during that F F C meeting, if we just go right to the F F C folder, the capital budget, you can click on that.
You can, I'm just for people at home, they, they have to, they have to download the agenda and rotate it.
I didn't mean to, I'll give you.
So I'm just looking at it. Word members, you should be able to rotate this thing, but I can't do it from the screen.
But I just think that some of these that have the notations on the side, so like, even that T M S classroom tech upgrades for, it says fiscal year twenty twenty-three, it's blue ninety-three thousand, but then it says on the notation that it's moved to twenty twenty-six.
That might be the bond, that's what I'm trying to find, yeah.
Like, a lot of these that we have on here, like, that's moved to, so I feel like if that, the bond is coming out on that twenty twenty-six, it doesn't really show on here.
Yeah, that, I think what, what was happening here is the, the blue is from March of seventeen, and we didn't have, that was where that, I should, can't help. So, and then to the right is where I think that might have happened even after that, so.
But if due to those financial considerations, they're moved from our request in the year, does our, our chart doesn't adjust to reflect that?
Well, when we get the information, we adjust.
We just, we'll move them to the various columns.
Yeah.
Because there was a lot of these items that are moved.
Probably a bond. Which I can find out.
I just think we should have on maybe green on twenty twenty-six, though they're coming up. That's, I guess we have written on here, another color, orange, that those are just moved to about twenty twenty-six, but they were, you know, already accepted, and that they're going to be planned out on that. We already have one, but they're. Because I just feel like, it just doesn't represent the target. What is actually transpiring between what the color is and what fiscal year it's under, but yeah, it's been moved. You know, bottom line is, I just want to ensure that the safety features that we're looking for are approved sooner than later or not, just moved to twenty twenty-seven.
I would say then, if the board is is thinking that, that especially those two, two things that you were talking about, actually, I would say that when we submit this to the council or to, um, it doesn't go to the council first, sorry, it goes to the, it goes to Lisa Hancock first. I think there has to be some sort of narrative with it, saying, yes, we understand, also based on last year, that these are the things you got bonded for, but we have two very specific items that we would like to see done almost immediate. And again, like I was saying to you earlier, Ashley, we I want to say we gave up, but we did, we gave up the eighty thousand dollars of the C N R A money from the settlement funds that they were going to use for that articulating lift. What happened to that? Did we just snooze, we lose? Like, should we have taken the lift, because if we didn't take the lift, we get nothing? So I don't know what happened to that eighty thousand dollars that we said, wait, hold off, don't, don't do the lift right now, because that would be ideal. If there is some still of that settlement money, and they haven't reallocated it to somebody else, it would be ideal to use it for this fifty thousand dollars and for these two high priority items. But without having that conversation with Lisa, which I think we also learned last year, we need to have these conversations, because they just kind of then do their own thing, and we're, you know, at the end, we're like, wait, wait, what just happened? So we have to figure out how to have that conversation and how to present this to, I think, her first, because then I think she puts together that whole big, um, capital budget plan and presents it to the council.
What is that, Brian Bulley, now?
Well, technically, we give it to the town, and then it goes through their structure.
Okay, so.
Right, so like, as far as a body, like, the board of it as a body hands it over to to the town. And then, yes, she has a lot of influence in what happens, and she'll review it, or then what financially could happen. I think what happened here is that as of March, that's where that was, as reported from the town, and then subsequently, I think it's been kicked back further, which is where the narrative somewhere, right? But, um, if this goes to the town, and then it is processed by the financial people at the town, and then ultimately, I, I believe the manager will be making a recommendation, but usually informed by the financing people. And then, uh, the town council decides.
But I agree with you, Chris, on this. Somehow, we've got to get our, our, our desires, our, our wishes clearly articulated, when we hand it to the town. Uh, it should be clear what we're looking for, I think last year we saw some room for misunderstandings, interpretations, and so, um, that could be cleared up here.
I was gonna ask, because it does seem like it got lost in translation, and maybe someone from F F C, or you could discuss in F F C, the best way to hand that off, so it's really clear, like at what juncture it would be the best articulated, and then, and then what, it just.
I'm like, both of those were, yeah, we were trying to. I would say, you know, so this would kind of be my thought process is let's go back and look at the five point or nine million dollar, I forget what the number was, I'm sorry, whatever bond they talked about when they did the presentation in March. I would say, let's get another, like, Ashley was saying, let's get another color on here. Let's, let's look and say, okay, what was everything that they lumped into that bond in twenty twenty-six? Let's move whatever it is on our sheet into twenty twenty-six in a different color, so we know that that was more or less what was approved by the, the town already for that bond in a. Approved by the the town already for that bond in a couple of years. And then let's go back and look at, is there anything that we feel is a priority that we would want them to. Really look at and say, do we have any other funding sources available like the settlement bonds or the. You know, all this other stuff that they talk about um that we could take our new pink stuff and. Really make a priority because, you know, we we know that there's some of the new stuff that they might lump into the bond. Or they might say, no, you know, we don't. So but I think, you know, like Tony was saying, we really have to communicate. What we want to be a priority. And that also then I would say goes to. We really need to take off of this paper if there's really something we don't think is a priority. Because as we found out last year, they don't know what we're thinking. They just look at it and say, well, I can take eighty and I can take seventy two. And oh, look at that. I've got a hundred and fifty two thousand dollar um. Settlement grant that perfect. These two things fit right in there. So we have to be very clear also if there's something we don't necessarily. Want on here or we're not sure of, take it off for now and then revisit it at a later date. And I would say like the cafeteria tables might be. So uh you know, something. So keep it on like our internal one, Dr. Willoughby, not the one maybe that we submit to that town.
And that makes intuitive sense. I think that the reason why it's on there is um. A five year plan always has a certain kind of um heads up to it. So if those come off directly and then they they come back on when they're in emergency. I think it's past, you know, there's been past conversations where where did that come from? You know, it was never there before and it just appeared. And it's so, you know, there's what is, I think, a reasonable attempt to say, here's something coming. And so it it's not in next year, but it's in, you know, five years down the line, these things are going to be falling apart. And the old modus operandi was none of this. It was just a piece of paper, you know, in a word file with a couple of rows. And, you know, it didn't do a very good job of like, hey, heads up, there's these things coming. So it might be who wants to keep some things on the radar there like the tables, because if they fall apart and you need them right away, you might have a big problem trying to fund something. In an emergency situation of that kind.
But if our intent i- is kind of an FY, so that and I'm not saying it is, but let's for the sake of the conversation, the tables. That we're putting that on there as a notification that this exists out here, not priority, but FY, then. Our response should be to articulate that as a low priority that we're putting out here. Uh right now, it's a medium priority. So, you know, again, when I look at that one, I think it's more important than it actually is. So I see what this.
You say, but I'm just organized it by like the high priorities and that means no.
The word low.
Yeah, I mean, I guess some of this was always the judgment of the people writing it up more or less. You know, and so um now as I think through it, I think of ways to kind of evolve it. I also think there's a cross section of trying to show you where something was as opposed to where it got moved rather than just moving. So like, you know, those ones that are sitting in blue was to let people know where they were. And then they were moved because if you just show where they moved to, somebody might know know where the board actually asked them to be originally.
It may be a case of the tool trying to do too much.
So I'm thinking that, you know, instead of some of this, we cut it down a bit and have, you know, moved from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty six and. You know, so this has evolved quite a bit over time. We'll find ways to make it maybe a little uh a little less informative. There might be too much here. But back to the thing of, you know, whether we call it high, medium or low, by nature of where you're asking for it, to some extent, it shows its importance. To some extent, you know, so you know, if you're asking for that, you could do something maybe that shows its importance. That there might be a way of saying this differently um. Because the, you know, those cap tables, as to someone's point, I can't remember who it was, but if it's that far out, it can't necessarily be that. That crucial, you know, that um important. Maybe we don't need both indicators.
But you also have when the opportunity arises, the low list. So why can't the tables go under something like that? Because I.
As well as.
But I almost feel like that is the low area. Like no one's gonna sit there and say, oh, this is great, you know. Let's do, you know, thirty five thousand or, you know, one of these upgrades versus doing our pink items that are actually listed as. You know, high. Because I think it is a problem that we don't have a low. But we don't have to say, well, this is a low priority. Yes, it's on there because you can show it. I just think it just needs to be. Rerworked because I think it's a good idea to have everything on there. I understand like a five year plan, you have to have whatever was within that five year timeframe. But when it's something that still says, you know, a medium, yes, it's twenty twenty eight, so we know that it's coming up. But it could technically, it could be a low item. So yes, it's on the radar, but it's not like we want this to be pushed up. All of a sudden, like the lift, we pushed it back and then it popped up and then, you know, so it just. I think there's a definitely, no, it has to be higher.
Fair value judgments, right? From the people that were putting it together.
So um and I think that's where we where we create a little issue for ourselves here is that chart and and looking at what you've got up here. So Mr. Stoppa, in this case. Presents this to yourself, which goes on to come to the board. He says that it's a a high priority and we obviously look at that and respect that. But on the tool that the board has to provide to the council, while we should certainly take into account. Where he says it is, that tool has to reflect what the board has decided.
Yeah, I mean, they get all that. Well, so if I. You would have a you have a huge process. Um that's why I think maybe there's too much. You know, um maybe we need to narrow down how we do this a little bit. Because it's grown over time to be much better than it was, but it's maybe grown too big or too much. Maybe we don't need. Bull, you know, maybe there's a way of doing this.
Because you have a lot of things. Just needs to be color coded properly.
Well, okay, but I also think for for one opportunity arises. You know, a lot of times I think you felt like academic things should take priority. And those event, these things have ended up and been approved by this board also as when opportunity arises. So if you had to make an individual call on every one of these, we would need to get this narrative and talk about every single one. And have the FFC or board make a determination on every single one, which will be. An extensive meeting with people, you know, so I would line up everybody. We would have this meeting and on every one of these projects. The board to then, after hearing what the input was of your staff, determine whether something was maybe higher.
So we're we're being asked to give this to the town and say, this is what the board believes. Uh while we strongly need to lean on the advice of our experts and our research and I do believe that. What comes out here has to be articulated.
Well, I to the point you're making, and I think in both directions in a way. You know, when we talk about certain things here, you are putting your faith in the people that, you know. You you're taking the recommendation of the staff and you're carrying that recommendation forward. If you want to make tweaks about certain pieces of it, then you can say, why don't we move this to this year, move that to that year? But when you do move things, there are implications to that that would then have to be discussed, you know. So for instance. If you want to move something sooner, it may be that that's not possible because of materials or that may not be entirely possible because. We only have three people in our entire facilities department, you know, that type of thing. And so it's only what they can put together and be able to manage in a certain span of time for project management. So like the board to some extent has to take the advisement of its people in this process. And that's what this originally was many, many moons ago. Was kind of a report to the board on on like a, you know, word file of the things that the facilities and other groups are going to be moving to the town. As some of the bigger stuff that was needed by the district. It has evolved to be a process that you're very involved with, even more involved with in the past. But I think you want to give some thought to, I don't think it's possible for you to deliberate on every single one of these and decide what the rank would be. But what you do probably want to do is just whatever you think should move from whatever position it should move from to another position. You say that and we go back and see what we can do with it. And I explain either why that is compatible with what people are reporting can be done or not.
Well, it's sort of what I think is what I'm saying, and I don't want to burden anybody else, is the tool is not articulating what we think it should say. Uh while I'm not asking to go through each one and do an independent vote on whether we agree here, I am saying that. The low, medium highs are not articulating how we think it should have been from from message uh what I'm hearing with the board.
And so that's that's my point.
This board has to be.
So you're saying you wanna you want to you want to designate every project and you want to decide.
Uh our 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 ticket again, what I'm saying is we need to change the tool. So that when we have conversations like this and we say, hey, that one isn't this year, it should be moved to this year, or this one, we don't think is that priority, we should adjust the priority. The tool articulates that message. Instead, what I'm hearing here is explanation of what the intent of the tool is. When it comes to.
So I'm saying your your professional staff has designated that that is a high priority for twenty twenty four. That piece of paper goes over to the town and that's how they would.
But we just kind of gonna keep going back and forth. But like, I think the ultimate idea is that somehow it needs to be organized a little bit better. It's just that there is no low option, you know, even I saw critical was on there, but there is no critical option either. That's shown on here. Everything is lumped into as mediums, you know, color codes. I think we just need to. Revisit the idea and organize it in a way that we can. Give this to the town council to show our wishes, whether that is with a narrative to go with. Our ideas and our thoughts with what items need to be done. It just I think that communication piece is what's a little missing. I mean, I don't think that anyone's looking to sit here and have a vote on every single item here. But I mean, we do have the packets from established as a stop it. Didn't really pick any low items and the kind of seemed like the low item would be the table, which is now in that to that twenty twenty. So I think we just need to refresh this. So maybe move the things so we can see that. Yes, there might be listed here, but they actually need to go into that twenty twenty six. Because yes, you have the information, what was accepted to change, but. Visually, we're not seeing that those are all lumped together within no grant. So if we can tie them all in, show it a little bit better. I think everybody would be happy to.
I mean, I might know know what grant it's in, but I can I'll try to clean it up so that it's a little clearer from. With respect to what's low, medium, high type of thing. But again, you know, how he uh how some people identified that. Low probably wasn't gonna have a lot. But we haven't defined maybe well enough what low is. Maybe we don't need as many.
I was gonna suggest, or even as opposed to cleaning this up and because this is, as you have said, what the. Administrators or the staff or people have articulated are low, medium and high. Maybe we create another one or just a smaller list of what the board. Has articulated.
And I I think I can evolve this thing to look a little nicer clear, but I I think that what we're struggling with a little bit right now is. We have four levels. Who determines what level that is and what's the definition of low? You know, and that type.
I I don't see it as that. I think what what um Mr. Holt was saying was that he's just concerned about the translation of it, like what. The town council, how they're going to receive it, if I if I'm understanding you correctly, that the form is this is a little bit ambiguous to someone who's maybe not in this room. And that we are going to be handing this off. Individuals or an individual who's not in this room that's going to make the decision on where the money is allocated. So I think. That's I think you were looking for a little more clarification so that it's more universal.
Well, they're gonna look at those sheets like that one right there and they're gonna decide from a finance perspective. Based on what we think is low, medium, high, critical, wh- what they can put into what financing model. And you can give them advice about or your feelings about what that should be. Um and maybe that's kind of. More of what we should do. This this had, this has actually been very useful. These sheets right there, those. So I I think to the point that's being made, maybe this priority piece needs to be reconceptualized. And and then I need to be clear on what the board here, what the board expects to be doing, because this process already is pushed back to August. You know, if we're going to be doing individual approvals on every one of these, then let's do it. We just have to make time for it.
I don't think anyone's like saying that because I mean, that's what I've seen review a lot of this wound up and. We do here per se, but I mean, I think when we look at some items that we're like, okay, we would like to see these done sooner than later and not get pushed back. Whether that is to be shared with a narrative or not. So I understand that they they put the items and they could put them in a grant and they could say, we could pay for X, Y, Z. We just don't want to make sure that that the Z is not picked over a W. That's.
Yeah, and and I I think I could find a way to make that work better.
Yeah.
So my two suggestions for the color sheet would be, number one, I think would just be clear. The priority column, the one all the way to the left, it needs to be sorted. All the highs should be first, then all the mediums. And then there should be a line with the woes under the line.
I think we talked about a long last.
I think we did too. So there's two highs. I'm just noticing that I didn't notice the first time I looked at this. One is a whoa, but the DR server upgrades. And one is a high, which is the oven oven steam steamer combo. So those need to be, or if if the uh server upgrades are a whoa, then they stay where they are. But I think the oven steamer combo should go to the town. So at least we can look at all the highs, then all the mediums. And then all the lows. And then my other suggestion would be. Like I was saying before, pick a new color. Everything that was approved last year gets color coded in this new color. That says already approved by the council. And then I think when we look at this. With those new organization, if you will, we might get a better indication of. What we as a board want to then. Say to the town, here's our chart. These two or three things or whatever it ends up being, these are what we'd really like you to focus on. If you could do this. You know, next year, that would be great. So those would be my suggestions on how to make this chart maybe a little bit more user friendly.
But it's probably trying to say too much. So let me look at narrow on what it says. Because for instance, on the example you used, that steamer combo, I think that was already financed.
Okay, so it could probably, you know.
I think it's, I think what's been tried to attempt here is just it tried to solve everybody's multitude of questions and it's trying to answer too much. And if maybe it could be.
It's confusing. It's definitely confusing. I don't know.
So off to the right, that one is financed by Lisa reduced it and then financed it, I think, in twenty twenty three this year.
Okay, so I don't know if we want to take it off or just like I said, if we color code everything that's already been approved, financed or. Ready to be financed, just maybe color code them all the same. And let the council come back.
Move them in the right area, though. Move them in the right.
Well, why do I think I have.
Priority?
No, well, in the right year, like so if something was approved, like this was.
I under I so I understand what Dr. Willoughby was saying with leaving them. In the year we did request them, but I think you can just color code them the same. Then, because I I I kind of see where you're coming from there. They should know that when we ask for this stuff and you keep. You you didn't, you kept pushing it out and pushing it out and pushing it out. So I kinda, I kinda like leaving it. In the year we requested it, even if they're not good. But if we know that purple, like, oh, no, we can't use purple. Okay, pick a different color. If we do whatever color was everything that's already been approved, then at least we know we don't have to fight for that. It's already been approved.
Just be careful. Too many colors on an Excel spreadsheet is gonna become confusing. At some point, we have to split.
Well, you do have, you know, let me, I'll take a crack at it. What it evolved to do is, if you look at it, you know, it's got. BOE capital, it's got capital bonded by the town, it's got capital funded by Yusuf, it's got like. There's many different classifications of how methods for funding. And so it's trying to show you not only when it was funded, what year it was was originally put for, what fund it's coming from. You know, which year it's supposed to come in and what priority it was given. And, you know, it may not actually be necessary.
When we get to those at twenty twenty six, they're gonna be falling off from the fiscal year of, you know, twenty.
I think it's trying to do too much now, but I think, you know, the core elements of of kind of. You know, why it's necessary, the the town often goes to those descriptions.
Which is, I mean, that launcher created a a concern. If the only thing the board is looking at and and adjusting is the Excel spreadsheet. And what I'm hearing from you is the town doesn't really look at the Excel spreadsheet, then. The, you know, the board has a responsibility to at least agree or believe in what we push to the town and.
So the the town looks at, here's what, here's why this is a little complicated.
And we did get an extension on this to not give them, right?
Yeah, we we were able to get that extension to um.
To provide it to them.
But the reason why this is, you know.
So the vote is next week or next, next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
This one chart tries to take the entire history of everything provided in capital for a five year span and put it into one sheet so everybody can see it. So this is, you know, this has evolved to the point that if you want to see historical and everything requested. Not only in the sheet, but in the past, this page has, it has everything. And what that was an attempt to do was in the cross section of all years, plus the prior year, plus all funding methodologies. Plus all modifications made to the town, it's trying to give you that on, on, on one sheet that you can look at. And it may be that it tries to give too much and that needs to be disaggregated into a few tabs or something like that. But that's why this is a, you know, this is why it has a lot on it and it's very busy, is it tries to do all of that. So, you know, and it tries to give, you know, some prioritization on top of the year, which is almost like a prioritization by itself. Uh, the narratives are things that are used mostly by the town. And something like that radio, the reason why it hits where it hits is that radio, um, the, the public safety police who are feeling very strongly about the, the radio. So that's how it ended up being there, because it's not, it's that they want to know where it comes from. You know, it's, it's to what Ms. Griffin said, because that was part of what my thought was, I'd like to know if it was done by accident, we need to identify who did it by accident quickly. But whenever these things go off, public safety have to show up and enforce. And so there's a very vested interest in making sure that, you know, that we know the source of these things, which is why it got a high priority. You know, um, let's say the board wanted to lower that priority, I think that that's a tough place for the board to be in for a conversation, so maybe we should. Think about how to make that a little.
Cause I think the board has to be involved in that. If, if the board is voting to push us forward and saying, these are the district's, um, the district's priorities. I mean, that, that is the mandate of the many people sitting here is to, to help make that, to help guide that. And while I certainly understand and absolutely respect our professionals that put it together. If we're going to do what we're saying we have to do, then we have to agree, we have to influence.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying we're not influencing, maybe this is too many layers.
Spanish or Spanish.
I think we can go around this for hours and hours. All right, what I did hear and what I do respect everyone's opinions and I do appreciate what everybody's saying and, and. I had said earlier about the, the low, medium and high and separating medium. High, medium and low might be more user friendly for the layman. Um, but I did hear Dr. Will on multiple times this evening say that he was going to try to make it more user friendly. I think right now at this point, we can, we've all, there's been a lot of, a multitude of ideas. Um, to get for, to Dr. Will, to, to kind of streamline to this best we can, so we can look at it and present it to the, to the council. I don't, I think we're trying to reinvent the wheel. And, um, I think that a lot of us have said about safety, like, uh, you know, we said when I first saw Mantra, okay, Mantra. And then I go over there because of the stairs, when you come into T I S, like that's priority number one is, remember that to me, like the safety, those things. So I think at this point, instead of laboring the conversation, I think we're all hearing what each other is saying and I think Dr. Will. Um, I hope that you understand what we're trying to clarify and yes, I mean, ultimately we need to discuss. And submit to the town council, um, based on, you know, the professionals that, you know, tell the public school systems are needs. And a lot of these things, again, I understand that articulating room and the communication situation, I definitely think we need to be cognizant of how we present it. With the narrative, but we could go on for hours and hours and hours about how to make this spreadsheet. And this is something that's been compiled for years and years and years, it's not gonna change overnight, so. Um, just to kind of move the conversation along, um, I think that we can, we should kind of move forward with this and go on to the next thing. Or continue, move the conversation forward instead of talking about how a spreadsheet should work.
I totally don't disagree and that's why I would say, so if there's anything we want to move, move it now, because we are running out of time.
Right.
So that's my biggest.
Yeah, this is the purpose of this, what, what do you want to move?
My suggestion would be, be articulating lift and the cafeteria tables get moved to be wow, so they're not off. But they're on here and then we redo this spreadsheet to show our priorities. So those would be my two suggestions as far as moving stuff.
So just to clarify, articulating lifts and tables.
And the tables, keep them on there, but move them to bottom.
Cause you're articulating with going into negative. One, one, one more time, that's it, because we gotta wrap this up.
I'm, I'm in mind what Dana said.
Obviously, we're running out of time though, so we can't keep, we can't push the conversation.
Right, I feel like we should have the conversation about our desires, you know, like, let's, let's talk about.
There's a point that all of you, I think I can evolve the sheet, you know, make it maybe interactive, find a way to make that work. And then, uh, so you can look at just, you know, certain snapshot, but we do need to know what you think should be low and high priority right now. In that process, we have actually extended this out and made it even longer with more time and F F C has seen it twice. I think that, you know, now we just need to know what you think should be moved up or down. And then if I feel like there's some reason why we couldn't, I would let you know between now and next.
But I guess, I mean, I agree with what, what Ms. Griffin's saying, with the exception of, you know, I think the woes are when you have excess funds pulled out of here. Uh, and I think the tables and the articulating lifts are not ones we want to spend excess funds with. Uh, so I would, I would recommend pushing those, you know, sticking with low priorities in the twenty twenty eight column. Um, and then bringing up to somehow articulate is, you know, high, high priority. Uh, particularly the, the Mantra and the, uh, the radio recorder, I think those are important. Okay, I'm done.
I can, I can get behind that, just pushing them out instead of moving them down.
So the radio and the mantra.
T I S, absolutely.
I still think it's taking these order on the left, and I and then media.
So you'll notice it'll throw all the.
I know, I know.
It'll turn into like a, like a unicorn pukes on the paper, which it already is. It'll kind of be like more like that, but yeah.
So let's try it if it really is more confusing. Do you want to send it to me beforehand?
Well, this is gonna. Should we have an F F C between now and then?
I'm out of town next week and then I believe. I guess we could like right before.
I mean, I'll share what it looks like sorted, but I'm also gonna try to make it better, make it a new version, evolve version of the. You know. I think.
Does anyone have any other comments about the items that are listed? Versus the spreadsheet and the list. Okay, so. We're leaving this as you're going to get in touch with, uh, Griffin about the sheet.
I'm gonna create a couple of versions of this and I'll share the one that looks like it's the least painful.
Okay.
Plus, I mean, what we really need to know though, it really is where you want things to fall. Cause between now and next time, that's really what you've got to decide here. You know, what you want to be priority, also keep in mind, well, anyway, that's it.
All right.
And the H VAC. Uh, the, the H VAC ones, somehow, we, we need to give those, make sure that they're prioritized or in the narrative somehow that. You know, we're going to be required to do this, the, the state statute is gonna push us that direction or force us to make some hard decisions.
Do we have a town grant writer or, because they left, right? Yeah, but do we, do we get another new one?
I don't know.
Or is it just a vacant slot?
I know that the first, that they've been, they were looking. And this person resigned, but I don't know. I can, uh, sure.
I didn't know they were, no, we have a grant writer, they were able to, I know you typically tend to look for this, but I just feel like. Perhaps if we have one, they can look for the stuff of that. It's not either here nor there. Okay, are there other further questions? You know, I do well. That's me, all right.
Beautiful.
Has met now at this point, um, we'll just start over here. Communications, communications can be quick, because we discussed, we finished discussing, discussing the, uh, state mandates. Um, we looked at last meeting, what we have looked at tonight, went into some items in order of detail. Um, and as Jacob asked, the next, um, the next step would be putting together communication. About some, um, state mandates we might, maybe wanted to address that we feel are unnecessary. Time, I think Dr. Will was going to look at the. Monetary implications of some of them and things that we've programmed that maybe are more obsolete than we talked out, talked about in past meetings, et cetera.
Any P T O, P T A, you want to throw in?
No, no, really no updates, um, everybody's kind of just getting started and, um, they said that they will give me more information after their next meeting, which usually happens at the end of the month.
Perfect, um, F F C. Well, we've discussed the capital budget deadline. We reviewed the August thirty first numbers, um. We also talked about turf field replacement, that we didn't want to just completely let that fall off the radar. We're gonna talk about that later this year. Um, we talked about the town to has a, um, ADA final report on all athletic fields and a couple of the school fields are on them. So we talked about that we just need to be aware of that potential implications. We talked about all the grants that are currently being applied for or annually renewed. We talked about the, um, long-term replacement plan for the education technology, so just that's, that's coming. That we will need to, um, build that into our operating budget. And then we talked about, um, a potential for a solar power opportunity. And, um, Dr. Will, I think somebody's gonna do a presentation, correct? Or we're gonna have the Triton or Titan or whomever it was, um, Titan, um. Come and give us more information, but I think we all kind of also said that we don't necessarily want the salesperson of said solar to be the only people we hear from. So we need to kind of, um, take, figure out, you know, what would be the, the best to have it solar at all for schools. Three roofs and then I, the high school would be one of those like canopy ones across the parking lot. So looks very intriguing, but. So we will, um, see where that goes too. That's it.
The canopy at the high school, it's an interesting concept.
Uh, so we met right before this meeting. Um, we looked at the data portal, uh, so we had a little peek of that, but then really looked at a whole lot else besides what you saw. Um, we had a very interesting discussion on, uh, unstructured. Playtime for children in elementary school grades, uh, this is something that I know, uh, the mental health task force has asked about, a few members of the community have asked upon. So we had a, had a good discussion about, uh, the benefits of that and what is currently offered in the district and will probably be an ongoing discussion. Um, we also got an update up on the path dates, our pathways, programs. Uh, that was, that was very, uh, very enlightening, um, encourage, uh. Other board members to, to peek up in the curriculum folder of those documents, um, to see what our students are doing. That are, uh, great programs that I think have a lot of potential to help, uh. Help maintain students in district and maybe potentially bring some students in as well and, and just make the high school experience better. And then we'll look up on the task force, mental health task force, uh, the survey, um, that we, that the task force have been advocating for. Um, is now underway and we should be, or we, the town council approved the money for that to go forward. And we should get some results for that by the end of the year, we can take a look at at that point.
Perfect, looks like the playtime in Lamont, the day to play. Policy.
Yeah, policy met, uh, today. Uh, we discussed policy sixty thirty, which is, uh, parent, teacher communication. The, the funny thing is it was intended on being our, you know, just bringing it up to speed with some of the changes. Uh, but the more we got in there and really started discussing the changes that were in the shipment model, uh, the more we had concerns as to, okay. You know, this is a significant, a much bigger impact than, than we thought. And before we go ahead and, you know, impose that upon the district, we want to make sure what's required versus what is just, you know, shipment saying that this is part of their model. Not that they do that lightly, but so Dr. Will is gonna go back and dig a little bit further into that and bring the, the committee, uh, some more information. Uh, we also then, you know, in line with, uh, Dr. Will's earlier presentation. Uh, there's a lot of those legislative actions that start out with, by this year, the board shall have a policy that does not, not, not. Uh, so we started looking at those, trying to hash through. In this case, we started looking at the, uh, the fair and equitable identification of gifted students. Still on a, on a pretty high level, but, but, you know, like, it just grew and grew, the more we looked into it, the more we had to pull out from it. So, uh, there's more that, that Dr. Will is gonna go in and poke together some more information. Uh, and much like Jacob said, you know, as we get into these, I'll be reaching out to the, the other committee chairs that I think this touches. And inviting you to the policy meeting as well, so that we can at least make sure that we're working in the same direction.
Am I forgetting anyone at this time? Everybody? Okay. Um, chair reporter, yeah, today's been a doozy. Um, reaction, so, but like, uh, participation, anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand, which. Nick is C B C, we got Christina, then we got Lisa, so we don't even have any.
Lisa doesn't want to talk.
Her kitty cat does. Yeah, so. Let's move to the, uh, points of information. Anyone have anything? Then we will, um, we need a motion to go into the executive session. Oh, and I think this is Brandon, but.
Motion, I agree, the session, invite Superintendent Willet.
Any discussion? All those in favor can say aye.
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 Tony. Aye, so we will now enter into executive session at nine thirty. You have, um, the motion. I will, um, entertain that motion.
Motion to authorize the. Indemnification and payment of legal expenses for Board of Education Chair Ashley Lundgren. And Superintendent Walter Willet with respect to the pending claim before the town ethics commission, number twenty twenty two dash one.
Any, um, further questions prior to, we'll just do a roll call vote, any other questions? Okay, we'll start with you, Jada.
Aye.
Jen.
Aye.
Griffin.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, Jacob.
I'm staying too.
Sophia.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Tommy.
I'm staying.
Lauren.
I'm abstaining.
And I will be, aye, therefore it would be majority. So at this time, I will, um, entertain a motion for a German.
Motion, second.